...our student board directors here with us as well. We are going to go ahead and rise to lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice and moral
Thank you very much. We will now move on to agenda item 2.01, which is our action to approve our regular meeting agenda. May I please have a motion to approve agenda item 2.01, action to approve the regular meeting agenda?
I move to approve our regular meeting agenda.
Second, say.
Vice President Miller motioned and directed seconded. Do we have discussion? Since there's no discussion, I will call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
The approval of agenda item 2.01, action to approve the regular meeting agenda passes 5 to 0. And that brings us to the public comment portion of our evening. Each person will be given three minutes per topic to comment, and a maximum of 20 minutes for any one topic will be allowed. Speakers whose comments are less than three minutes in length may not defer their remaining time to others. If there are multiple speakers on one topic, speakers may be limited to points of view not yet expressed. Any person wishing his or her comment retained as part of the permanent record may submit a prepared statement to the board secretary prior to the oral presentation. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments and concerns related to district personnel will not be heard in public, but rather should be directed through the complaints concerning school personnel or programs, which is policy 40220. Formal presentations must be scheduled with the superintendent in writing, no later than Tuesday noon, one preceding the regular meeting. And per board procedure, we will not answer or respond to any questions posed by a speaker tonight, but we will make sure that you have a follow-up as soon after the meeting. So we have two different public comments tonight. And I'm going to start with Nancy DeLiso. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Could you come up? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy DeLiso. I was coming up because I wanted to talk a little bit and ask a little bit because I need to find out what's going on with the instructional materials committee. It's facilitated by the teaching and learning staff. There is a... Tohoma parents are represented by an undetermined percentage of IMC. Considering parents are the primary stakeholders in the education of their children, I want to know if there are enough parents in the community that are part of this committee. So I guess that's my main thing. And I just want to... I just wanted to find out a little bit more about it. There's not a lot of information on the website other than there is a committee, the TNL is included in it, but there's not really a good representation of who is included, what percentage of parents, especially parents, are included in that committee. I think it's important to put this up. That's really good.
Thank you. And we want to make sure you get a response to your question, and we can't provide it tonight, but do you have a written statement sharing what your question is?
Well, you don't really do any convenient things.
That would be great, if you could, yes. Okay, great, thank you so much. And then we have a written comment that was submitted, so I'm going to read that out loud. This is submitted by Andy Seeley. And it says, "Subject is composition of the PSD IMC Directors of the Tohoma School Board. By PSD Procedure 2020P, the Instructional Materials Committee, IMC, will be facilitated by teaching and learning staff who are designated and members will include teachers, instructional coaching staff from TNL, teachers, representatives from special services, parents, students, and a building administrator. The board will determine if a board representative sits on this committee. By your policy then, Tohoma parents are represented by an undetermined percentage of the IMC. Considering that parents are the primary stakeholders in the education of their children, the degree of parental membership should be guaranteed as sufficient to reflect their status as primary stakeholders. The reasons that, in my estimation, an insufficiency results in a serious systematic inequity of a Marxian character hitting the QAL education establishment as oppressors against QAL parents as they oppressed. I urge the board to reconsider its policy on the allocation of members of the IMC, addressing the need for equity in the review, evaluation, and reconsideration of PSD instructional materials." So that is the conclusion of his public statement. And I wanted to let you all know that there are upcoming changes to the Open Public Meetings Act, which are coming into effect in June. And so as a result of those changes, we will not be reading written... Any public comments that were submitted ahead of time in written form will actually be distributing them to our school board directors by email. So just know that that change is coming down the pipeline. And now that is going to be the conclusion of the public comment portion of our evening. And that brings us to agenda item 4.01, which is our student board representative reports.
Thank you. So to start it off, our speaking of the report this week, and for the first on our agenda is that our kindness week events are happening every day at THS. And I'm not sure about all the other schools in the Tohoma School District, but I know that's happening at the high school. The book drive is happening at all Tohoma School District schools. And all the books will be going to the Maple Valley Bookthing. And the last day to donate at a THS Tohoma School District school is by 5:13, so it's Friday. Also, the school play at Tohoma High School, Anastasia. Tickets still are available for the 12th, 13th, and the last day of the play is the 14th. And there are two shows for that one. And more information about tickets can be found online at Tohoma Drama Network. Also, the Cinderella project is going on this week. And I'm not sure when it's ending, but I know that it's happening through this week and during Power Hour especially. And this Friday, class elections at Tohoma High School are happening. So if you have a student in, a freshman, sophomore, or junior, voting is happening if they didn't know. Also, for juniors and seniors, there's sophomore, sorry. Prom is coming up fast, and ticket prices are increasing by the week, which is Prom is May 21st at Pacific Science Center from 8 to 11 p.m. The theme is "A Night of Thousand Lights." Also, more information on seniors. I know there is senior sunset on June 4th, and there will be a movie, and you can vote for just twice a movie by May 23rd. Also, for more senior information, our senior oral boards are coming up on May 26th. Your high school seniors should have that information through their AGGI or social studies class. And it's on May 26th, and it's a presentation, and we talk to adults in our community and teachers about our plans after this whole. Also, AP tests are finishing this week, and makeup tests are also coming up the week after following, so just keeping up with the AP coordinators and all the information for testing. And that is it on our report.
Thank you so much. If you all are a fan of looking at our school board agendas, who like to compare them, you may have noticed that there's a change to our previous format. At this point, we typically transitioned into our administrative and director reports. Last week, the board had the opportunity to have a full-day retreat together. And one of the things that we discussed was how we can most effectively use our meeting time with all of you. And so we decided that we do such a great job of communicating with each other offline about, you know, updates that we have on our committees and things that we are learning through our meetings with other departments, that we could best use this time by taking away our administrative and board director reports so that we can actually gather information that we need and that you all will benefit from. So we are not going to have administrative and board director reports right now. We're going to take a break, and we'll circle back on this in October when we have our next retreat to see if it's working for all of us. So now, we are going to move on to the presentation, discussion, and action item portion of our evening. And as a reminder, as we move on to this section, I'd like to remind everyone that the board has agreed on using round robin to ensure that each member has equal opportunity to speak. So we're going to keep our discussion length per agenda item to 20 minutes, which I'm going to monitor, and individual board members' discussion to three minutes per agenda item, which Mrs. Wheeler is going to monitor for us. Each director's time will begin with the first word they speak and will continue through the responses that are provided. So we are moving on to agenda item 5.01, which is a celebration of Tohoma High School student Christopher Santana. We always love celebrating our students, and this is a really exciting accomplishment. Christopher Santana earns the title of Puget Sound Skills Center Student of the Quarter. He's enrolled in the Aerospace Manufacturing and Engineering Program. And so we want to welcome him, have him come up. And we have a certificate for you. If you'd like to take pictures of your family, we'd love to acknowledge you and have you share a little bit about your experience, yeah?
Yeah, I'm hoping I can share a couple pieces to come up, Christopher. So Puget Sound Skills Center is one of 12 skills centers across the state. You're perfect right where you're at. And we have a number of different programs, some of which we don't have within our own school system. And so it provides a wonderful opportunity for students to access programs they wouldn't normally be able to access. And the two times I know that I've been up to the Skill Center this year and checking in on the AAV program that Christopher's part of, they do a lot of cool things. The big project that I've witnessed has been around the model of the Hubble Space Telescope, which is pretty slick. But I also happen to hear something about a lightsaber, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Christopher yet. So I'm hoping that's a part of his story in sharing what PSSC has meant to him. So thanks for coming, Christopher. Tell me about the lightsaber.
So we're going to be having a light, so... Say a light for stuff?
Yeah.
But supposedly you light it up or talk to it, it's spiraling, or he definitely actually burned it.
Oh, okay. I'm pretty slick. That's cool. You guys have questions for Christopher?
Have you kind of been...
Same as me.
I'm just excited.
So Christopher, again, so what's the next step for you after this? This is lightsabers and all. What's the next step for you after this?
Loy or the...
I want to add to that a little bit. Thanks for that question, Director Wiggins. On the day we were there, two weeks, three weeks ago, the folks up there were sharing, there's a number of kids who are in the program right now, already going through interviews. We've got several that have been hired already. It's just, it's fantastic, and it's a wonderful opportunity. We're excited for it. And congratulations, and thanks for representing our everybody really well out there. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you so much for joining us, Christopher. And we know you all have very busy schedules, so please feel free to head home if that works best with your schedule. Agenda item 5.02 is action to approve Tohoma High School Asian Student Union Club. May I please have a motion to approve agenda item 5.02, action to approve the THS Asian Student Union Club?
I move to approve the THS Asian Student Union Club. And second motion to approve the THS Asian Student Union Club.
Director, Vice President Miller and Director Wiggins seconded, thank you. Tohoma High School Advisor Amanda Forte and high school students will now join us to present the club's proposed constitution and answer any questions that we have. So I'd like to welcome you up to the front. And you can actually...
Yes, use the microphone.
Okay, well, thank you so much for having us. My name is Deborah Monda, and I'm a senior, and I was one of the co-founders of the Asian Student Union.
Hi, thanks for having us. My name's Daniel Park, and I'm one of the co-founders of the Asian Student Union.
I'm Amanda Forte, senior, and I'm one of the leadership officers at the club of relations.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Gerber, and I'm also one of the leadership officers this year.
I'm Amanda Forte, and I am the counselor at Tohoma High School, and then I also advise the club.
So we just wanted to start off the co-founders about why we wanted to start the club. I came from a senior school leadership before, and when I came to Tohoma, I noticed that there was always some sort of lack of community for AAPI students. And I felt like founding the Asian Student Union would be like a pedestal for Asian students to come together at Tohoma and Maple Valley in general to look forward to sharing cultural experiences like I did in Seattle, while also sharing our similar roots, being Maple Valley, growing up as an AAPI student in Maple Valley. So I felt like it was a need that we had, that we needed at Tohoma. So yeah, that was one of the reasons why I started.
Yes, I'm an AAPI myself. I moved from South Korea in 2019. So I've experienced a new shared culture between in South Korea and here in the United States. I believe it would be a wonderful opportunity for us to just share the culture and learn by each other's culture and just improve our community and give representation for AAPI community.
And the overall goal of our club is to appreciate the cultural heritage of the Asian Pacific Islander Death Sea American community at Tohoma. And we are working to build a space where every member, regardless of their race or background, are granted opportunities to discuss and share their personal experiences regarding their cultural identity. And going on forward, we're going to talk about what the Asian Student Union has accomplished this year, being our first year as a club in person.
And one of the first things that we have done so far this year was in late March, the Equity Board hosted the Culture Fair, and the Asian Student Union were just in conjunction with that to truly process it and have a lot more involvement, especially from the volunteer side. We had about a dozen people just from the Asian Student Unions build those posters and signs and truly display their culture. So the Culture Fair was one of our opportunities to truly build that atmosphere of appreciation and also pride in what it means to be an AAPI in Maple Valley.
We also hosted a meeting regarding the New Year, which was one of the biggest opportunities for us to not only celebrate the culture, but also to learn culture together as a community, as a school. So that was one of our proudest achievements in this year.
One of the things that we wanted to note was our amazing accomplishment in growing our club. At first, we started off with about 10 members and has now grown to about 50. And I think a huge part of this is due to a lot of students have transferred here. Maple Valley has a lot of new housing conferences, so a lot of new families have moved in. There are students from different backgrounds, and they're all coming together in the ASU. And that's an amazing thing.
Yeah, and we wanted to give the chance to have the opportunity for you guys to come to our next event, which is our upcoming rally. It's going to be on May 15th at Four Quarters at 12 p.m., which is a Sunday. And we're just going to be out there rallying in regards to AAPI heritage month and of course, stop Asian hate movements still go on today.
And now just to dive into this, sorry, I'm tall. The ASU, so as we all know, Maple Valley is a constantly diversifying place, and Tohoma School District is doing so as well. And we see this especially in the younger demographics in the elementary and middle schools. So we hope to not only expand ASU there, but also influence them to create their own leadership styles and their own endeavor to defend our schools.
Sorry, it's a little too tall for me. But and now we're thinking of also bringing on our new election boards. Most of us are seniors here, and we're going to be passing down the club, which also means continuing the legacy of being the first affinity club at Tohoma. And we hope that other clubs will be spurred from the footprint that the Asian Student Union has installed at Tohoma.
We're also going to continue our bi-weekly club meetings at our school during Power Hour and continuing annual events such as the Culture Fair.
Okay, and we just want to give you a big thanks to you guys. You guys do a lot for our schools and our districts. And we just really thankful for our support of Maple Valley community, and it has been really great to us, and what our goals are and our purposes. And we're hopeful for the future with more awareness regarding different cultural backgrounds. As we know, Maple Valley is a growing city with different diverse cultures. So we hope to have our expansion in the club with more membership and also more individuals who are community leaders who want to talk and advocate in regards to the ASU. And we also hope for more programs for BIPOC students at Tohoma as general, not just Asian students that are welcome to the ASU, but all students regardless of background are welcome. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you.
I'm just curious how new freshmen coming in this next year, like how would they find out about your club?
Yeah, so we're doing pretty extensive promotional activities. So we mainly function on our Instagram, which has, I think, above 100 followers. And through that, we try to communicate with not only this people that we have right now in the school, but also the rising high schoolers and the middle schools. And we also hope to have the club fair next year in person. And through that, conscious the ASU, but all clubs as a whole will have the opportunity to kind of show what they're about and draw in some new members. So we're hoping to do that next year and raise our membership even more through those endeavors.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
My questions were answered. You guys did a fantastic job, honestly, presenting. I kept thinking, well, okay, what are their plans for next year? What are the plans for a few years down the road? And you just did a delightful job of explaining what those things are. I mean, the thing that went through my head, well, a couple things. Just one, thank you for being pioneers in this work and for bringing this to our community, to our schools, and just to our today. Thank you for supporting them, really appreciate you as well. I'll put it this way, if you were to come back, and some of you are seniors, and you're going to graduate, you're going to have a 10-year classroom reunion, you know, 10 years from now, what would this club look like, or would you hope that it would look like? And what would it have accomplished by then?
Yeah, so as a senior myself, I was really hoping that, especially in 10 years, if I come back to Tohoma and I see an ASU standing, I just hope that it's still a community where everyone is not afraid to speak about their personal experiences, but also it's more so a public endeavor where individuals from all sorts of backgrounds, regardless of where you come from, are also there listening about their cultural experiences, and it really spurs from that. So I hope also fellow elementary students who are, who would like to enter the ASU are there, and hopefully a leadership position as well, but yeah.
That's great, thank you. Again, no, hello, by the way. You're a busy person. I had the chance to spend a week out in DC with advanced civics classes for the people, the constitutional competition. So I'm interested in what the process would look like to create your constitution, but we could have that conversation another day. What do you... So I think this is amazing, not just for what it does in the school, but like, I didn't have the chance to go to the Culture Fair, which I really regret, but I heard so many great things about it. So what's the plan for amplifying what you're doing in the school and getting that out beyond the walls of the high school, getting into the community so everybody can kind of benefit from this kind of the sharing of culture?
Right now, we're mostly relying on just recommendations from our current members. Hopefully, they're telling their families and friends, and that way it will reach the middle schools. We're also promoting our Instagram by also collaborating with other clubs and hopefully these middle schoolers or even their families and friends, they will see that too again. More members will know about the ASU and join the club.
AJ's right over there, I'm going to sit. You need to get some up.
Well, thank you all so much for joining us, we really appreciate it. And that's going to be the end of our discussions. I'm going to call for the votes, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item 5.02, action to approve the Tohoma High School Asian Student Union Club passes 5 to 0. Thank you for joining us. And again, we know you have a very packed agenda in your life too, so please know that you are welcome to head home.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is extremely student-focused, and we love it. So agenda item 5.03 is action to approve Tohoma High School Astronomy Club. And may I please have a motion to approve agenda item 5.03, action to approve THS Asian, sorry, Astronomy Club?
I move to approve Tohoma High School Astronomy Club. Second, say.
Vice President Miller motioned and Director Wiggins seconded. Tohoma High School Advisor Ryan Simpson and high school students are going to join us to present the club.
Unfortunately, Mr. Simpson couldn't make it today, so it's just us.
That's okay, yes. You did a great job.
No, you got this.
Hello, I am Haley Sato, I'm a junior at Tohoma High School, and I'm the acting president.
Hello, my name is Sladen Cooper. I'm a sophomore at Tohoma High School, and I'm the acting vice president.
So the Astronomy Club was originally called the Freedom Club, but unfortunately, we have slowly taken it from there. Currently, it directly comes here. It kind of died out, so our past president Kathy and co-president Brett, yeah, we started the club with the hopes of making STEM and general interest more accessible in Tohoma.
Yes, and so by doing that, we have recently, this year, we started what we call Project WAD. So we've actually succeeded in planning and initiating a launch of a weather balloon into space at around Armstrong elevation, which is around like 30,000 feet. And we're actually planning on launching that May 27th. It is a Sarafin box with a camera in it, and we're filming a little stuffed bear, actually. It's going to be quite a one in the space, and it's descent as well. And so that has been our major project this year. And we hope to bring more projects like that in the future to students at Tohoma.
We also plan to be more community-oriented. Another initial plan, so technically, so later on, June 15th, we have an astronomy event at Tohoma. We're in students of all grade levels, even outside of our school invited. We have a $20,000 astronomy event, we're in the community of planetary presentations. We will also be having, even collaborated with some of the UNTD undergraduates as well to help talk about what they do at their school and potential educational or postgraduate opportunities for students at Tohoma, as well as just for general interest to people that are looking at the stars.
Yeah, to build upon what Haley just mentioned, I want to discuss the goals of the Astronomy Club. Maple Valley is a growing community, we all know that. They mentioned it just now. And we plan to take advantage of that and utilize that to the best of our abilities. We plan to get people involved in STEM, pursuing them, and cultivating their knowledge. And we plan to host more events, even within elementary schools and middle schools, and get kids engaged in STEM. Because it's a very important field, it's very diversified, and there are a lot of routes one can take in their future using STEM. And our club is very good at teaching and instructing students on how to utilize technology, especially astronomy technology, like telescopes, et cetera. And we're also able to calculate equations such as the altitude, like the rate of ascent and descent. And we plan to instruct students who want to pursue careers in STEM. Thank you.
Directors, do you have any questions or comments? There was some questions.
Go ahead.
How many students are in your club?
So currently, it's around eight, but we are planning, we just hosted a club fair, yeah, freshman night, also what we call the Club Fair. And we had a booth there where we advertised our club, and we got more freshmen, more rising freshmen engaged. And so that's where we're planning to make the most out of, you know, uh... Sorry, I'm losing the word. Grow, to grow our club.
We've got about 12 freshmen that were seriously interested in living in the classroom, and our club also fluctuates very consistently. We've had up to 20 members within time during the week.
Okay, and then, sorry, just one last question. Can you tell us a little bit more about that $20,000 piece of equipment that you're using?
Yes, so that is called STREL. It's basically a somewhat mobile planetary. It inflates, and then it has disks that project different things, like either planets or stars, where also astronomy students can be up on different cultures, different cultural patterns, and constellations, and exploit it to grow their interest in it in Tohoma. That's what we are also going to do at the Astronomy Event. We're going to have STREL up there, and we're going to have like concessions and all those kinds of things.
Awesome, thank you.
To grow upon what Haley just said, we are planning an upcoming fundraiser, and that's what we're mainly focused on in the future. We want to be very self-sufficient in the way that we utilize and spend our money. We want to raise just as much as we use. And so we plan to... And so we plan to make community events fun by, you know, getting people of all ages engaged in science and in space through events such as the Star Lab and on Astronomy Night and stuff like that. So we really hope that we get your approval. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, that's great. I mean, it's amazing what you guys can do, and it'll help you grow. You will grow, and it's a big deal in Seattle right now. So I encourage you to utilize your resources, those companies out here, you know, who are, there's several other small businesses, fuel trips, et cetera, which you can do. More than astronomy, so I encourage you to do that. That's.
We have prepared a few more samples to show you. Most of the increasing, we've established a new place, our club, to really associate and introduce new resources. We're going to be similar launch this week. And we also have our advisors, we have two exams, and various companies, this is part of that, so we can just go to our students.
We also had a group field trip to UDU and the planetary there. I was unfortunately not able to make it, but Haley was able to go. And from what I saw, it looked very fun and engaging. And we hope to be more field trips like that in the future.
Well, thank you. That's going to end our discussion, and I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item 5.03, action to approve THS Astronomy Club passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Agenda item 5.04 is action to approve THS Culinary Club. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda item 5.04, action to approve the THS Culinary Club?
I move to approve the Tahoma High School Culinary Club. Seconded, same.
Vice President Miller motioned, and Director Wigan seconded. And you have joined us, so welcome.
Haley's side.
So basically, what we want to do is that, oh, my bad. My name is Lana Chang, and I will be the vice president of the club next year. And I'm going to see the stopper again, I will be the secretary next year. Basically, what we want to do is that we want to help people learn, like, to cook since it's a basic skill in life. And recently, we figured out that the school is going to have a theme book, or like, what's it, home land? And we just wanted to help people succeed in it.
We would like to make cooking more accessible, as it is often considered a more highly artistic field. And it can be a little bit difficult for people to add into, especially for our, but it also comes with sciences and art. So we'd like to focus on that as well, safety issues, and prepare students for workforce, like, and, 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 and.
Um, that's the basic gist of our club, but some things we want to like improve from it is have like more culinary utensils. Because our school doesn't really have that big of a variety of things, like stoves, or like. Oh.
Um, I think we have between eight and we have up to 25 students. It fluctuates as closely as it's going on. So it kind of goes up and down. So we'd like to expand the professionals of our club with more utensils and more accessibility to the industry, so.
Oh, another thing is that I feel like having a big stove would be super helpful. And so, like, with what Haley said, like, um, from learning how to cook, and Jimmy Murphy, we may have to implement, and it's like, the COVID thing is like, kind of settled down more, and we were hoping that we could have a big stove at any point in time.
Uh, so far, we've consistently made dishes from local ingredients, from telling two more local things, we're telling for this one, this is, uh, to kind of fill up with what we have in this beautiful Washington State. So that's mainly what we're doing. We do plan to do a club fair next year, but because this is a relatively low cost of everything.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I have a couple. So one, you're also in the Astronomy Club, so will you're cooking the, uh, plant, mobile planetary foods. That would be a good selling point. Off the head.
I will be doing concessions.
Well, yeah, okay. I expect to see nobody speak to me, so. Uh, to what Director Kieran said before, I'm in astronomy, I think I would think about partnerships in the world, but a local business, especially in a local business, is a lot of support the students of the district. So I would really think about partnerships. Enough restaurants here to like try and develop those things and create more opportunities. But then I think the other thing would be, just a thought, that as we listen to the presentation from the Asian Student, the Asian Student Union, uh, Club, think about how that could integrate. Because to me, like, one of the things that I find, I'm not, I'm not a foodie, I mean, stretch. But one of the things that I'm fascinated about it is probably one of the top three things you think about is culture, right? So maybe thinking about some partnerships with that, with those cultural related groups as a way to kind of broaden sort of what you guys are trying to do in that space. Those are just thoughts. Looking forward to some cooking at some point. Like, always think about what you can do for the book, right? We're happy to eat food, and we're happy to do other things.
Uh, yeah, in our, like, we do continue to make food friendly, but we do have a pretty heavy focus on cultures for months. This month is a culture base, because our cuisine is always a spring, so we're doing, we're doing those ultimately that are season. But we have done it at Tahoma, and we did a lot of different stuff, and, 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 so.
We also, I think, we need something where it can say pizza, so basically, we kind of make the dough, and like flip it, and just, and, and pizza.
I'm wondering, what, both of you, what's your favorite thing to cook or make?
Uh, I'm most interested in pastries. So I'm on the black and white side. But I know that a lot of people are, like, so, 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 more artistic desserts. Do more like westerns, sort of, you know.
Um, my favorite thing to make is probably curry with my mom. It's really good. But like, it's been such a part of like my life for, 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 um, that. I like making a lot of foods from the oven.
So where do you make your dishes? Because you don't, Tahoma doesn't really have a home by class. So do you do it at school or at home?
So they don't have a home land class, but I believe they have a class that's called Just Life. And in that room, they don't have a lot of culinary, I don't know, that is also, um, culinary, and, 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 and stuff. But they do have a store that we use at our school, because we have these very, very specific restaurants. And we tend to buy all the things, it's.
Well, thank you both for joining us. We're going to end our discussion and call for the vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item 5.04, action to approve the THS Culinary Club passes 5 to 0. Thank you for joining us.
Another discussion, and I think just to wrap, just to the approvals of all the last three items, I would really just stress the importance that comes to play at the school. This isn't just something like, okay, there's a segmented time on Friday, and every student just picks which one they want to go to. But these are students running the clubs. I think they saw that with that one, with the Asian Student Union, and I didn't invite them to come up there. And even then, it was the students that were running, and it was the students that chose to do it. And a lot of ways, that is the backbone of student culture at the, at the high school. It isn't just, it isn't just events at the high school, but organizations that choose to do themselves.
Thank you. Agenda item 5.05 is our school nurse appreciation. We have one nurse at every building, which is something that a lot of districts can't say. So we're really fortunate for that. And of course, as you know, with COVID, the job requirement has changed a lot over the last two years. So we're especially excited about the opportunity to celebrate our nursing staff, and I'd like to welcome Jennifer Lyons to present.
First of all, I want to acknowledge that I started out as a school nurse here in the district, and I didn't ever think that this was the job for me. But Mr. Santana was one of my students, so he called me out the other day and said, hey, I know you. And I said, oh my goodness, like, I didn't, you know, he's a grown man now. So that's, that's my longevity with the district, so I can now officially kind of call myself a Tahoma, because they're all getting older now. So tomorrow is School Nurses Day, and as everybody knows, this wasn't what we signed up for as school nurses. We thought we were going to be taking care of little people. And in public health, it's basically public health is what school nursing is. So in our, our community, as Director Hallwell said, we do have a nurse at every building. And how proud that makes me, because across the state of Washington, that's why I am a school nurse. I started off at Lincoln Nurse Elementary School substituting a young student who had just been diagnosed with diabetes, and whose parents were fearful for his ability to attend school. And the school was one of the largest schools in the state. I think it was the largest elementary school at the time. And helping his family navigate that situation made me realize that I was blessed with my health, and my children were blessed with their health. And I did not know that there were so many students who needed care until I worked in the Tahoma School District. And I, there were just so many kids that came into the health unit like openness. We would see anywhere from 30 to 65 students a day back in the health building. The space was the size of a Coke closet. So Michelle Zaleski, who was my boss at the time, had a real passion for it, and she gave to a lot of children in the community for about 20 years. So she's the reason that I'm here standing here, because I was a trauma junkie. I was a trauma nurse. I worked in lots of different types of nursing before I stumbled upon this. And it's by far not the most highest compensation I've ever received. But I can say it is my passion now. And you'll find out with all of the staff that are in our health rooms right now. So I'm very proud of the people I work with. They worked very hard for the past couple of years under COVID. I, thanks to my director, saw this coming at the very beginning, when we started having to deal with COVID. And my director, Annette Woolsey, approved me to start going to public health meetings, where I was taught how to contact trace. Not that I didn't already have that skill set, but more and more information came to me from public health nurses and from Dr. Shane at King County Public Health. And I learned that I really liked it. It's difficult work, because it can be somewhat adversarial at times. Because there was a day when I had to say to Superintendent Hanson, hey, we have to close down more than we thought. And that impacts your ability as teachers and educators and school board members to educate your children. But we wanted to keep the community safe. So I really appreciate that we still have nurses in the district. We did experience a lot of turnover during this time period. I have five new school nurses this year. AJ, you lead the next line.
Bet, there's a clicker hidden in there for you.
Hidden?
Yeah, down below.
Okay, so I wanted to bring some love into that situation. So this is what I thought too. The first picture is the Band-Aid. So there's lots of jokes about school nurses and what we do. It is not Band-Aids and ice packs. It is access to education for our children and our community. Okay? Um, my mom, yeah, you remember General Hospital? And anybody who's seen Showtime's Nurse Jackie, she's fearless, but a little scary. What my friends think I do, that my friends that work in the hospitals think that I have a lot of time on my hands, that I have a cushy job. As any of our nurses who've transitioned into this role will tell you, it's not a cushy job. There's a lot of paperwork. So we'll skip over what I think I do, because y'all can hear that I think that I'm a carer of children. But really, a lot of what I do is paperwork and support and training. So it's very important for me to understand Washington Administrative Code, RCWs. My director has helped to educate me quite a bit, and so has the Special Services Department, as well as the Teaching and Learning Department. So I'm very appreciative of all that. What does a school nurse do? Well, there's a joke up there. School nurses are not just Band-Aids and ice packs. And that's Sean P. For those of you who don't know Sean. Wave at Sean. Whenever Sean sees me, he says, you got a Band-Aid for me, Jen? But basically, first aid is only one component of our job. Like I said, it can be, it's a triage situation. It's like going into the emergency room some days. And sometimes it is, just ice packs and Band-Aids. But many times, it's assessments, close head injuries. This week, we sent at least two people to the emergency room. Nurses got in ambulances and went with them, and I received the kindest emails from their parents saying, thank you for providing safety for my child who's now having surgery, or who is now going to be out for a while. The paperwork that I was talking about, individual health plans, 504s, that includes meeting the multidisciplinary team, families, teachers, counselors, and showing them how we're going to keep their kids safe and provide access to education while they're having, having their learning experience. Uh, teaching and education, gosh, we do a lot of that every day. That's a big part of nursing. We did, prior to COVID, teach American Red Cross classes, and we're hoping Tracy's help to get back on that process for our staff. Uh, we teach about medications. We delegate to people. We help with bloodborne passion training. We do the work of, when we're delegating, we teach other people about some of the tasks that we're able to delegate. We handle seizures and life-threatening allergies. Explain to their professionals and teachers how they are going to handle those emergency situations where they occur in the classroom. We do hand washing classes. One of my favorite things is to teach hand washing to people that are coming in. Uh, they, I use big words sometimes, and so I'll talk about bacteria and germs and sputum, and they'll raise their hands and ask questions. And the teacher will say, why don't you use points they understand? I'll say, because I want to teach them. I want to teach them these things, not their bodies. So health assessments, this year was crazy, trying to get hearing and vision screening done, and OSPI warned us to get as much done as possible. We tried. I am part of the early childhood program, so I screen children coming in to our early childhood programs. We're part of the IEP process, and we work tightly with SPEC in supporting SDI, especially designated instruction for children. So that's one of the things that I do with the NAMM and with the team. Uh, we do state reporting, and we coordinate global health jurisdictions. We had a case of chicken pox this week. Um, and then disease management, COVID-19, that took a lot of time. So COVID-19 in and of itself was its own job over the past year, too. Let's see, who works in our health rooms? Well, in many districts, it's a health room assistant. In, in the case of a health room assistant, they should certify the basic first aid CPR, AED, and they're usually delegated to a nurse. So for, for example, in Kent School District, there is not a nurse in every school. One of our nurses just came to us from Kent, and she had two schools, but she had a health room assistant in each school, and she delegated to those people. And delegation is a legal terminology that only a nurse or registered nurse can do. So it's very important that it's all the process turns at all to ensure the safety of everybody at hand. Um, we have LPNs. An LPN is a shorter degree program. We have RNs. RNs can be, they take the same licensing exams as a BSN. Their focus is just primarily on nursing classes. We have BSNs. This is the first level at which you can have a nurse. If you were listening when I was talking about board policies. An ESA certification, and that stands for Educational Staff Associate. When we go to nursing school, we don't get any school nursing really, unless we do an internship or some sort of preceptorship. Um, so the ESA program provides us with some information and training to be prepared for the school setting. So the differences between FERPA and HIPAA and things like that. If I say anything that I'm common knowledge, please stop being on, explain it. Uh, the nationally, there's a national certification for school nurses, just like there is for teachers. We actually have somebody who's, one of our nurses this year is a master's degree prepared nurse. And she's working in a health room with us. She's very well-educated. We have, we do not have, but there is always an option. Some districts have school-based health centers where they have a nurse practitioner who can delegate to them. So back to the BSN. We have three nurses I mentioned at our last board meeting that are studying for the ESA certification, but we don't have replacements for them right now. So we have to create those if that's what we want as a district. And then there's means. And I kind of fell into this role, and I coordinate health services. I'm not really the nurse's boss. I guide them, mentor them, and if they're an LPN, I delegate to them. But I view my role as to help them do their job better and to fill in the gaps. So a lot of the work that I do is working with my director on some RCWs policy, curriculum, making it better for our kids. A nurse in every school. The reason I placed this up here is because there's a lot that goes into why we've had turnover over the last couple of years. The numbers that you're going to see for each of our schools, it's the number of bodies that were in the school when I created this slideshow to the best of my ability. I think that one of the things that people don't understand is that not all of our schools, other school districts will send kids with health needs to a particular school and staff all in that school with a nurse. So Tahoma's very progressive, and I salute them for doing that and making that attempt to do that. But still, look at the caseload for each of the nurses. One nurse each building, seven hundred and sixty-nine students at Glacier Park Elementary School. And so I put acuity, biz, sale. What does that mean? It means that not all schools are equal necessarily, and so caseloads are very disparate, which is why it's important to have someone like me that's reflopping to help fill in the gaps. Because look at the numbers we've got down here. One nurse for one thousand one hundred and nineteen students. So while we do have a nurse in the building, that's one for all those healthcare plans, all the things that need to be done every year. And that doesn't include the staff, because nurses daily provide assistance to staff. More than once, we've had nurses intervene and take staff members to urgent care, anything. And school-sponsored activities, a lot of the times the teachers forget to tell us or we are not good at communicating to the teachers that the activity is school-sponsored. And guess what? We have to provide nursing services if they're necessary. And these are our people. So I'm going to mention each of them really quickly by name. Janie Heller came to us as a new grad this year. So she's one of our new nurses this year. Jessica Walcott, also a new grad, but a very experienced, also a new nurse this year, but not a new grad, very experienced nurse, an LPN. We have Sean Scorp. This person is a very passionate person about her community and came to us from working in community service already. And she's already pursued her master's degree, is interested in expanding her role by teaching with Marty Barber in the CTE program. If that becomes a reality, we don't know, but she's working with him towards that. Chelsea Allard is a much beloved nurse, she's been here about five years. Nicole Mansel, a very experienced nurse. She's one of our nurses that's pursuing her ESA. Sean has already applied for her ESA. Tina, I'd like to mention that Tina is a veteran and has flown in helicopters and assisted people all over the world. Kelsey, one of our new nurses, she's a new grad again. Melanie is our only non-nursing staff, but she is a medical assistant and has like twenty-five, thirty years in the healthcare field. Anna Chelsky-Sotiras is also somebody who's pursuing her ESA certification. And then we have two new nurses this year who are basically close. So Cindy is working on our transitions program. And Lydia Hansik was formerly on our COVID response team. And there's substitutes. I saw Alicia's made there too.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm a little bit nervous. So Alicia Torrisson.
Like, is she quitting? Just saw her.
Yeah. Alicia, our regular nurse of this year, and a very experienced nurse. And she and I came back both from a hospital case management round, which a lot of school nursing is case management, if you're familiar with that pathway. Here's our substitutes and contract staff. So we have waxing and waning population of contracted nurses that come in. I would also say that in particular, Randy Warneck has been in our district for about five years, maybe four years, and she's assisting Sean Scorp in the health room at Lakeview Nurse Daily. Tahoma, I think they're a leader in the health supports for children and providing access to education. This is what the National Association of School Nurses recommends as a ratio, is one nurse per seven hundred and fifty healthy students. We tend to attract in our healthcare systems here, both Mary Bridge and St. Children's, staff members have called me before, they send students and their families here. They move here specifically because we have a nurse in every building. So kudos to the district for being progressive and thinking that way. But can we do better? Maybe, because the ratios are very, very high. So that's my spiel, and I really want to say thank you. Mostly, a couple of my nurses are here today. Nicole, Alicia, Sean, and Anna. And they work the long hard day-to-day, and they still wanted to come to see what it's like to be at a school board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Will you invite the nurses up to join me, please?
Come on up.
So, you know, we would expect Jennifer to sing the praises of the nurses, and it's pretty easy to sing the praises. The part I want to share is having worked closely with two of them, tell my personal story. So Nurse Anna, thank you. And our service at Shadow Lake together, an absolute professional. And that funny slide that Jennifer put up of what people think nurses actually do versus what's happening. We saw that time and time again. And when Nurse Anna went to the high school and we had a nurse opening at our building, it becomes really obvious, all you have to do is not have a nurse to realize the seriousness of what's happening. Nearly every single building, if not every single building, has kids with life-threatening conditions if not handled properly. And certainly diabetes is one of the common ones that we point to. But I've worked with Nurse Nicole with a number of different students with at least that serious, if not more serious, conditions. And so my gratitude, it's the peace when you're in the building and you know you're in charge of the building. It puts your mind at ease knowing that you have a health professional there. So my gratitude to you two and to all the nurses. So thank you, guys.
So we have awards. Well, they're really certificates, but we're going to call them awards because you're fabulous.
So this rarely happens where a large scale certificate of appreciation, but I want to give you that. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. And then I'm going to give you the stack, because you only have some of your nurses here.
Okay.
But I'll give you that. Appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us tonight, we really appreciate it. And we hope you will leave so you can go sleep.
And Christopher, you're relentless, but you guys do not have to stay the whole time.
Thank you, Nurse Anna.
Thank you.
We are going to continue our appreciation by inviting Officer Sam Shirley up. We are going to move on to Agenda item 5.06, which is our SRO, which stands for Safety Resource Officer Recognition. And if you do not know Sam, you're missing out, because he is a true joy of human, and he also makes a phenomenal impact on our district. And so we cannot skip the opportunity to recognize you. And Superintendent Hansen, would you just share your personal story as a principal and benefiting from Sam?
I will. I'm going to ask Sean Kelly to share a little bit about his experiences first with Sam. He hasn't, Sean had no idea who was going to be asked to do this, but then I'll absolutely share.
Nothing from Vegas, Sean.
No. Thank you, Madam President, Superintendent Hansen. Sam shows a unique individual on our system, because we can just throw any police officer into the VNSRO, it takes a certain individual to understand how students and our staff and our community work together, of course, to make sure that one's safe. But also sometimes, students make fortunate choices, and we think we educate them and redirect them, and they work with the parents to, you know, not, we don't throw them in jail, basically, for Sam. Sam's really good at that. And Sam has always put the safety of students and staff and the community first. And I'll tell you a story right now, is one time we were getting ready to go out to a family dinner with Stanley, and I called him up and go, hey, we have a situation with us on homework. I didn't know he wanted to have his wife taken out to dinner. He actually pushed her off to the side a little bit, came out to care of the situation, and then he went back out to dinner with his family. So because he put the students and staff first, he wanted to make sure our students are taken care of. So he's a very special individual here. We've had quite a few NSROs come through our system over the years, Mike, I've had a long time, Tracy, and Silvery. But Sam takes it very personal when things go wrong in our community, and he's always around. After this, he's done here, he's sent down to high school for the big baseball playoffs. He'll be a graduation, he'll be a prom, he'll be at every event, and all football games. He's there to make sure that our students are safe. And he's an outstanding OMO, and because of him, some of our Tahoma students are now deputies in Sheriff's Office, and I think two of them are true, as I remember, right? So it's kind of fun to see the next generation of law courses come true. So thank you very much. Was that good? I can't say it any better than that. Sam, please.
Appreciate it.
You picked her.
Where's Aiden?
Right here. It's the night of your championship. I appreciate it. I like the talk here, looking forward to Sam. I sent to the sheriff, she was actually going to come out with a few shoulder notes, and I told her yesterday. Ready? One, two, three.
We will move on to Agenda item 5.07, which is the Highway 169 update. And we're going to be joined by the City of Maple Valley Representatives, Steven Chen and Tony Dolezal. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. I'm Tony Dolezal. I'm the Public Works and Community Development Director for the City of Maple Valley. And you may or may not remember, I was in front of your ward two years ago talking about the same project, except you only saw this bunch of me in a box. We were virtual at that time. But I thank you for welcoming us back to give an update on, we call it T45 SR169 improvements, right in front of Rockford Elementary School. This evening, I have with me Steven Chen, our city engineer, and Amy Shopp. She is our senior project engineer. And I will take away Steven, and he's going to give you an update.
Thank you, honey. Good evening. Thank you for having us today. I'm Steven, I'm the city engineer for the city. I'm here to give you an update on our SR169 improvement projects. It's a T45 project for the city. To give you a little bit of background on the project, we had in 2019, our city council decided contract to, and for the board, to start the preliminary design for the projects. Of course, during the year 2020, when COVID hit and the pandemic started, like everything else, they supported out, and the project is putting out until the winter of 2021. The winter of 2021, we decided to get the project started again and to start the design for, realized that this is a very important project for the city, and also a very important project for the communities and the computers, of course, the schools. Our school using a daily basis. The project's adapted into the six-year tip, the special improvement grant as the council passed on, and will be adapted to the future six-year tips as we improve, implement our transportation improvement grants. Based on the meeting that we had in 2019, we could open house. At that time, try to get the preliminary input from the public on what are the high priorities for the project? What are the major concerns? What are the improvements that the communities are looking for on this stretch of the highway? And we hear from the public, say, also the stakeholders and the school districts. We get some of the communal associations in the area that's adjacent to the project. We learned that the community wants us to improve access and safety from side street and the school driveways. We all know how people try to get out from side street onto the highway, also from through school driveway itself. We were from the community that they wanted to leave traffic congestion around the corridors, which is during the get-out, Bob A.M., here, morning and the afternoon, and also during the school, before and after the school, the school traffic congestion. The community also wanted to improve access management in a way that's more able to safety, try to get in and out in and out of the highway. And we also, the community wanted to improve school walking routes. Wanted to improve, of course, we have our with the farmers markets, the side street from us now, from these buildings. And we know how, we all know how far out they come, that farmer's market is. And the community wants us to, I don't get the farmer's market traffic, how we go about improve that farmer's market traffic adjustment. The community also wanted to, the city to provide, project to provide non-boroughway improvement on the corridor, sidewalks on both sides and by lanes. And there's a concern about speeding this on this stretch of the corridor of 169 itself. Right now, we are, we are going to find out about the speed of this stretch of 169 and then become certified once it passes the school. With those figures from the parks and the stakeholders, the school districts and all the stations, of course, the city councils and the neighborhood officials. We look into different options of of the two for improvements for these corridors. And the project limit is from southeast 260 to southeast 250. Yeah, we look into local improvement, would be feasible of indeed at those two intersections in a way to maximize the benefits from safety and operational standpoint. We, this is one option that we think that our society teams look into the visibility of it. I wanted to, before I get into the detail of these options, I wanted to say that this is still a very preliminary option, but it's one of the four options based on the benefit from operation and safety standpoint, as some of the authorities have been, like, talked about in the previous slide. These will allow us to have intersection improvements at the two intersections with a roundabout, more towering roundabout at each one of those intersections, and then have a physical waste median in between the two intersections to only allow right-in and right-out access from the school driveway and all driveways in between the two intersections. to only allow right in and right out access from the school driveway and all driveways in between the two intersections on both sides. And to improve the school congestion, traffic congestion before and after school. Yet right on behind this building here, there's a great city railway, we call it 258 Street. The city has thirty feet railways on, right now, school is about one and a half. But it's where the city has thirty feet of railways up in 1258. We have been coordinating with your facilities, operation teams. Lori has been providing us a lot of various information on what kind of traffic condition that we dealing with on a daily basis before and after school and how the traffic operates during those times. Because we have thirty feet railways here and we looking in, we try to open the school district to look into, see if there's a way we can improve these thirty feet railway. To use that as a school drive out and pick up traffic only. This will allow us to relieve the congestion within the parking lot of the school itself. Of course, we still have to look out the details with your facility and operation, operation team already to see what the future plan is for the business and how we go about making that feasible. There you go. Twenty-four. You all know their one condition they would have in the highway, I mean, using on a daily basis. So right now, we have two, one lane direction with a second turn left and then eight shoulders on both sides. With this improvement matrix, we have twenty hundred feet railways, 1169. Between that one hundred feet railway, we look into widening the highway to provide two lane directions with by lanes on both sides and seven foot end of streets and ten foot sidewalks on both sides. And this cross section that you see here is a typical cross section in front of the school. What it means when it gets to intersections, when you have a roundabout and in those intersections, the cross section would be wider, could be a little bit different. And also there will be more railways required at the intersections. This, this is showing the multi-lane roundabout at intersection of 260. It allows us to physically slow the traffic down before you get to the roundabout and then have a multi-lane intersection going around the roundabout as how these directions into the project. And we all, the roundabouts want to provide passwells at this point. And they also have a state of passwells, so we definitely only have to pass one, one direction first and then we use the median as a refugee and then pass the other, the other direction of the highway. This is the intersection, the roundabout intersection at 258. And it's a multi-lane roundabout. The, we're looking into, so right now, the metro bus stop for, for the northbound direction is at the corner, at the south side intersection. And then for the southbound direction, the metro bus stop is at the north side intersection. With the roundabout would be able to move the metro bus stop to both, both directions to, to the, to the south side intersection. So they only have the pass, one passway of passway side, of passway to get to the bus stop. And we would provide some, actually, we have seen those passwells recently. It's when the, they try to pass the passway, they push the buttons and they give the driver some money and they get to pass the, pass the highway. This is right in front of the school and where we are, where we are at. As you can see from the, from this line, the driveway to, to, the current two driveways to the school have the, will change to right in, right out only. And then all the school traffics coming out from the driveway, the, the southern driveway will for school, regular traffic only. The northern driveway would be for school buses only, just like what we're using that right now. But they will be able to manage to now driveways. They, we allow right, right, right in that. Once they turn right and they, they will use the roundabout at the, those intersection, I saw to give, to you. Either when they're coming into, for this southbound traffic and they're coming into the school, they will use the roundabout at 260 to make the U-turn and go into the school that way. And they leave the school heading and then they use the, the roundabout at 258, 258 to make the U-turns. The, the 258, the new access to the, to the gap of the school district building. We try to see if we can, because we have thirty feet railways. And we try to figure out what kind of storage that we need in order for us to accommodate the school traffic and pick up traffic. So we need some curving analysis and actually we can see there are some numbers here. So here, so right now, school parking lot, that provides a hundred feet of curving space. And after that, the cars will have to either sit on the shoulder of the highway or at the center to try to turn in. So, and, and based on what we saw out there, it's going to be about a thousand feet of curving, curving space that's going to be there before and after school. So we take a look at thirty feet behind this building here. We, we, our society, we can look at a piece of our choose that are having one lane that goes in, let's see if we can have two lane that goes in, but only one way, each way. They would become similar to a holding lane before, after school. And then we'll accommodate those curving from curving traffic for during the make out of school. And then the, the 258 SS would be go around the school building here and then find a way to come there be from east of school buildings. We still have the capability of your facilities, of the operation teams to see if that's feasible. And somehow connect that to where the school traffic and make out areas of the school. When we were meeting with Lori's team and what a concern that we have, of course, with coming around the city and those are one and, and the school buses are using them right now. And they, we heard that there may be concern about how the school buses going to go, have a behavior go around those 119 turns. This is showing that we, when we do projects, not just the school buses, we also do use the software based on the size of the vehicle and see if, have seen if the improvement can accommodate the size of vehicle and school buses. We also take a look at the truck traffic to 1169, what kind of truck, truck traffic from those where there is forty feet, sixty double trailer or sixty, I think what, sixty-seven feet, big trailer trucks. So we use those as a template to see how those can, how the intersection improvements and accommodate the roundabout and accommodate those design, these rail vehicles. School buses are one of them. And we are able to get the information from Lori on what kind of school buses that the, the school district may use. And I think that that is the biggest school buses that we are in the school district. It's the forty feet long school bus. And the, the pad that's highlighted in yellow, that's the, the pad of school bus. And the, the center island that is in green and that is the center island of the roundabout. And then the highway that's in red, those are truck aprons. Trucks can still drive on top of it if they have to use it. But what these, what these software survey is for forty feet wide, forty feet long, they can ride on school buses. They still be able to make the U-turn without, most of the time, without driving on top of that apron. So it should be able to accommodate the biggest school bus that you have. Of course, we also check the right turn movement, the left turn movement and all movements of school buses and see if the intersection, the roundabout can accommodate those movements. And the U-turn is the most critical movement. So as the road is showing, how school buses making U-turns. The southbound school bus making U-turns at 260. And then it should be the one that those school buses coming out from the school parking lot and then use them and try to have that queue along and try to have that to southbound as well. Be similar to what we're showing at 260. You can see the, have all the school buses, they, they should be able to go around the, the roundabout, the multi-lane roundabout without, without any problems. We are also want to make sure that the storage area that we want to be, the project is going to be provided for, for the school pick up and drop off traffic. And making sure that's going to be sufficient, sufficient for, for, for storage. So we can go get what curving that we have out there. You can see, this is, these pictures were taken right before school's up. So you can see the cars, the southbound cars were using the center to try to get into the school. And then the, the northbound traffic, pick up traffic using the shoulders on east side, 169. Just two car on the shoulder and try to get into the school. And then right in front of the school driveway here, we're putting them around, that's an obvious direction during those times. So based on the observation that we have, this is showing the system queue storage, which is whatever storage that you have inside the parking lot, those are the blue colors. And then once you pass that, when the queue goes on to the 169 and then all those, all those cars I gave you, they couldn't get in, then are they sitting on either on the center for next and also on the shoulder of 169, those are the red colors. So you feel combined what you have in the parking lot. And then also the curving that is using the 169 as a curving storage. And they give us some idea what would be the curving demand is. And then we're going to, the, the program and see what storage that we need to provide if we're able to connect the school parking lot, not that of this building here and they provide two holding lane and go into the school that way. It'll give us around two hundred future queue storage to accommodate the curving demands. We just went up and checked, that's going to be, that's going to be sufficient. This highlights some of the school software improvements. See, 169 highway is only wider than two rule intersection by the by lane and seven foot end of area and ten foot sidewalk. The ten foot sidewalk is wider than the sidewalk that you see in front of the four corner, those are ten foot sidewalks. And we talk about the queue demands and system queues and how the project is going to accommodate the queue demand. Here is, we could open WASTA and see if it's feasible to put in a low ban or right turn pocket coming off 169 and, and turn right onto using this new access road here. The benefit of that is the cars will slow down before they make the right turn. So when they complete with any possession on the sidewalk, they're pretty much at the lowest speed. And second would be if there's any, any case that the queue might go onto the highway and they can become aesthetic, curving is very forward to the, the school traffic. It's going to be, if we can, it's going to be two eastbound curving hogging lanes on the new access road. And also with, with tools, to travel in these directions, the traffic and also school bus coming out from the school, it should be able to find a way to get traffic gap so they can make the right turn and allow the idea that what is out. It's right now, they have time, based on what we saw during the school hours, they have time to actually just turn right or turn left out on the school driveways. Heading two lane, when we dispatch them, we are much better than achieving that two movements. There'll be sidewalks, when the, when the new access road connects to the, the back of this, this building to the school, so they don't have to pass any of the, any conflicts with the traffic. They will kick buttons out, they can walk straight into the school without confronting any, any, any conflicts. The roundabouts are beside of accommodate using for school buses. If, if we could, we could move with Lori's team to see if there's a way we can provide some separation, traffic separation management changes inside the parking lot. So we don't have to use the parking lot as holding storage area for, for traffic queues as highways. Someone trying to get out, not giving them time, they can get out. Next step, and a little bit about project schedules. We will continue our coordination with the school district and the school as you, how feasible these options is. And of course, we reach out to two different stakeholders. They will include WASTA, homeowners association, metros, of course, our, our official city councils. And then, and then once we have some idea how best we can, the proposals we can impact the party owners, we reach out to those party owners, but we spot, we'll have the information there. And then we have a meeting at one point. Of course, we have, wherever that we, the public side team propose, we have to get WASTA approval on this. Our plan is to, we shall put in a set design sometime this summer, drive, drive overseas summer. And then the final design for the first hour next year. And maybe start the driveway of season sometime later in 2022. Depending on fund base, construction can, can be started in 2025, but that's depending on construction fund base. Right, and who's the, uh, what's the patient for the update? And, uh, we will get more, uh, proposals.
I just want to say thank you, Stephen. Obviously, Stephen and his team have spent a good deal of time analyzing a lot of information regarding, uh, the issues that we have in front of S R one sixteen nine. And rest assured, uh, moving from thirty to sixty to a hundred percent, uh, there's a lot more analysis and coordination that we would like to do with the school district. So we thank you for this opportunity. Um, I'm just stretched a little bit, um, but, uh, we take some questions from you. And Lori wanted to say something.
Just like he, he pretty much addressed everything that we've talked about, but one of you know, understand, we know that there's been an, uh, issue here with, um, drop offs for quite some time, and we've seen an increase since, um, COVID. And they've actually done another study, transportation studies, they didn't write for COVID, right after COVID, and I believe it was a thirty percent increase, thirty five percent increase in, in traffic flow. So understanding the meaning of this, um, trying to support this decision because we think it's the right thing for, for school here. And the idea there'd be two lanes going back, we get the traffic flowing through, um, we can put the roundabouts to the right way to keep traffic flowing. So we'll be working closely to ensure, uh, that this is a working solution for the district as well as, um, our community and transportation. And, um, while we're closely ensuring that there's enough traffic for the buses.
We, partnership is one of our five year goals, and so this is such a perfect example of it. It's something that people don't often think about, but it's so critical and incredibly grateful to you for all of the thought and care you put into the design to ensure that our school buses can navigate those roundabouts safely. So before I open up the floor for questions and comments, we are beyond our twenty minutes, so I just want to get a thumbs up approval from our directors to make sure that you're comfortable continuing. Okay. Okay, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, I was just gonna, um, when we think about, so there's two parts to this. So one, I assume that there's been an impact, um, kind of on, on what this design would look like in respect to the rest of the traffic that's flowing from, like eighteen, for instance. Took me twenty minutes to get off eighteen and get to the school here this afternoon. So I'm assuming those, those analyses are being done as well in terms of the impact of this design on that overall traffic flow Maple Valley, that's obviously a citywide issue. And then I think the second part is, um, has this been, is this, what's the coordination look like in terms of like Maple Valley strategic growth, like, like, how, like the volume, is the sheer volume of traffic? And is this the right design for not just, you know, um, three, five years from now, but ten, fifteen years from now?
Uh, it's part of the preliminary, preliminary design. We have to do traffic analysis and there are queues submitting to traffic analysis to the Wasta and the other world. So we look at existing condition, which is, uh, uh, based on the two thousand nineteen traffic patterns. As Lori was talking about, how the pandemic, um, uh, has changed the traffic patterns and changed the drivers', uh, uh, decisions. So we decide traffic patterns, uh, where the school's favorite. And we're going to use those data as, as to analyze the system of issues. And then beyond that, we're looking out to six years, twenty twenty seven, uh, five or six years, twenty twenty seven, as the part opening years. So there will be conditions in the way, based on, uh, the, uh, possession of traffic, uh, in twenty twenty seven. And then of course, uh, twenty years from now, uh, we also can look at the twenty forty, um, year sign traffic. It's the how the, uh, the, uh, the book is going to accommodate future traffic twenty years from now.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time. Thank you for all of the energy and expertise you've poured into this, this project, all these projects. There are many. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We will now move on to agenda item five point zero eight, which is our annual food services report. And we are going to be joined by food services supervisor, Mary Noack, who is going to present the food services annual report and presentation for this next school year. Hello.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, superintendent, board members, and everyone in the community. Uh, it's just been nine months until almost students return back to campus for a full day, um, uh, for four days of instruction, of personal learning. So, um, so the, uh, so the USDA or the government actually approved, um, districts to operate the same as summer option. Uh, it means increased funding to make sure that children have access to meals at no charge. And it also helped the school districts to overcome operational barriers and supply chain disruptions. Uh, the district implemented different COVID protocols in the lunchrooms based on the requirements of King County, uh, that is social distancing, um, wearing masks and counter tracing. The access to school meals varies from school to school. As you can see, um, our kitchen staff distributed, uh, sack lunches to all the classrooms at GP, Deschamps Park, and Rock Creek Elementary Schools. In other schools, uh, the students came through the cafeteria, uh, picked up the lunches and ate either in cafeteria, in tents, or in designated areas. So, um, there've been a lot of changes just from school to school. Uh, just like other ste, just like other teams, our food services team keeps adjusting the operating procedures to their, uh, situations on hand and reassess if they meet students' needs while considering available staffing, availability of food and supplies, and cost. Uh, school meals are free of charge, and we have seen an increase, a significant increase of our participation, um, at almost all schools. At breakfast, the A P or average daily participation increased roughly fifty eight percent, and at lunch, we saw increases about seventy five percent. Uh, so this had a huge impact on our operation, uh, from ordering to receiving, uh, from preparing, building, uh, school meals. We have to keep in mind that all the items had to be individually wrapped and kept and put together. So just the way of building these markets, um, has been, um, pretty demanding, I think, for our teams. Supply chain disruptions have a significant impact on our ability to buy food and supplies. Uh, it's very frustrating for our kitchen managers. It's probably the key thing that made this year more challenging is just getting food in the order. And used to, we get what you want, um, if you had a contract for it, we would order it. And now it's like you have to order, receive the back order, the short order. If you don't get it, substitute the item, and then just see what's available and what's on the table. It's basically, if it's their order, now you may not use it right away, but see if they're stored, so you can use it to, or to use on the road. So the whole ballgame around ordering has changed. Um, this has been a point of frustration for our community, for our parents, because we cannot follow what we put on the menu. You may have noticed that other school district, districts have actually stopped to publish monthly menus, which is the week to week, and they put even a disclaimer on that saying, we're going to follow the menu to the extent possible. So the supply chain disruptions had a huge impact on all operations. Um, some of the items we cannot get anymore from our main distributor, US Foods, and we have to go online and order from Uline or the Web Restaurant Store. Um, they are paying, charging more for each item, and then on top of that, they're charging us each of their costs. So we pay, we are paying out of the nose to get those items. That's, um, right across the crease there. Everything was small, energy costs, transportation costs, food costs, labor costs. Um, we all read about inflation being eighty percent, and now there's talk about an increase of, um, of increased food costs due to the, well, like, in terms of range shipments from Ukraine, so war on Ukraine products, a little food crisis, and I think we're just starting to see the impact. In, uh, I wanted faster, I want to save my ten minutes here. Um, in late March, the King County Health Department changed the COVID requirements again. Those changes were really good for us, uh, specifically the social distancing, um, changed a little bit, um, smaller strict matters became optional. So this allows schools to modify, actually, their COVID protocols in the lunchrooms, and we were able to use washable trays. Um, so we tried, uh, we tried to switch that, um, we made the switch at Chevrolet, at Cedar River, and at my goodness, and our kids were just absolutely delighted to get lunch trays. Um, who would know that lunch trays could be destroyed, right? But I think almost half was like, why can't we get lunch trays? I mean, it was a big pick. Who would have known? That was happening in March. Um, the, the good thing is that when we're serving, uh, lunches on trays, actually, we're only putting the items, um, that are required for USDA, the minimum requirements, and there are two, um, two items, really, the entree and food cap. I brought food, but if I don't run out of time, I'll show you what it looks like on the, from a kid's perspective. If not, then, um, let's just keep it at that. But because at GP, kids get the whole lunch, and they can opt out, they get basically five out of five components, they'll go ahead and, um, they may just grab a sack lunch like this, right? This is a GP, and this is a sack lunch, this is what they get. And then if you're a kid, you're going to look through this and go like, hmm, yum, yum, I'm taking this, pick me some of the basic pizza, I might keep the apple sauce. Um, but wow, they gave me three bags of carrots, because this is the requirement, three quarter cuts of vegetable, I really don't want this, this was a trash. And the mill, eighty out of hundred kids from a mill, twenty of them were thrown away. So this stuff is picked up by the custodian and it's ending up in the trash. And money this represents is about forty to fifty cents a day per day. So if you're serving three hundred kids at GP, you know that probably forty to fifty cents a day. We lost about ninety dollars in the day, because you're serving items that kids want to eat. If you're using washable trays and only put two items on the tray, uh, kids might select side items, they may go for extra broccoli, or milk, or carrots, whatever you want for, but the amount of kids that actually want to eat, um, is, um, much lower than a percent of those. So that's where your cost savings are, and also efficiency operations. So we have themselves a shift, Mary. So you see washable trays here, um, we have used washable trays in other metro schools for years with success. We are now going to use washable trays in secondary schools. Traditionally, we have used compostable disposable trays at, um, the high school in Mapleview. The trays are very difficult to get. When we get them, they're very expensive, so the price almost has doubled. So we have pilot tests at the high school, we have been using washable plastic trays, and really with, uh, the students are all returning the trays, um, for air washing, and then we, we use them the next day. So at the high school, it worked. And I think given the commitment and maybe with age appropriate in high school to do that, we are going to test it at Mapleview in summer trials starting in the next two weeks, and, um, we may have more barriers there, but on the other hand, we have some students at Mapleview who've actually asked that we back off using so much disposable stuff because it's all bad for the environment. So some of the students actually are very motivated to support us in this endeavor. So, um, we also received laws from Washington State. Um, they provided guidance that we don't use individually brought, um, captured plastic trays in the school setting. That law was started or initiated two or three years, I think, pre-contemplating. Now they're pushing through, and we'll see to what is that actually after a few days. Uh, finally, uh, we really don't know what program we're going to operate next year, whether it's, um, SSO, the summer school option, or the national school lunch program. We're waiting for guidance from the USDA, whether or not, um, they're providing access to all children for free meals. If they do, um, we can do this, of course, and just adjust our routines in the next school year. If they do not extend the waivers and, um, make us look back to operating the national school lunch program, the district will have to go ahead and decide on, um, determining the prices, and possibly reviewing our, our procedures for, um, students that have education problems and start their charging, charging levels. So that's going to be complicated, but, um, we have a review, we are just of reasoned pricing, and, uh, we have return rates, and we can see, especially for lunch, they use much increases from last year. So if we were to charge for meals, I don't know, but that's something we need to review, but prices are markedly high, right? So if you're adding another eight percent, certain inflation, and then annual increases, and you're looking at two, two, three percent, uh, approaching a five dollar, um, which is pretty astounding for school and most of our customers. All right, um, eight nineteen, eight nineteen. All right, very good. Uh, do you have any questions?
Do we have questions or comments?
President Paul, I'll call him.
Yes.
So, um, Mary, I, I think, you know, most of us have had experience in all of our buildings, getting a walkthrough in the last couple of years. The part I want to commend you and your team on, um, I'll, I'll just use a couple of examples. Having walked through the hallway, the main hallway, uh, Glacier Park in the morning, and your, your data plays out where the dramatic increase in volume of what you guys are doing over there for breakfast alone is just shocking. Um, and I contrast that with the experience like for breakfast at Cedar River, which is so much smaller. And so your team being able to, uh, adjust on the fly very quickly and adapt to, okay, where do we need to go? You, you've had these routines for, you know, years and years, and all of a sudden they're, they're thrown out. And, um, I'm reminded of Director Penner Graff's comments after she got to visit with Karen up at the high school, and kind of the magic voodoo that they do of predicting, um, that what the food use is going to be, and really just having to dial them to minimize ways. So, um, my compliments to you and your leadership and to your team. So thank you, Mary.
It's really the team. We have terrific kitchen managers, they're really having to work through a bit of difficulties, and, um, it's really our whole team working together. So thank you. And, uh, I think I'm a pragmatist, I think it's going to get worse. Not that I'm, that I'm pessimist, but I think, um, signs are not good right now in terms of, um, everybody, everybody, your food, food costs, and energy. So any guidance, um, or expectations that we might have? I would appreciate that.
Thanks. I just want to say thank you, Mary. I thank you for everything you guys have done, and everything, um, Superintendent Hanson said that I saw going on in our kitchens. Um, and I also want to thank you for the work that you're going to have to do in order to, um, roll out a, a successful, um...
We won't feed the kids.
Yes. Yeah, so thank you so much. It looks like a lot of, a lot of work that was involved.
Yeah, so for GP and Rock Creek, we, we're looking at a situation where we have to decide how to feed the kids next year. And if we can figure out a model and allow kids to choose what they want, that would help us greatly, because, um, sorting sack lunches and putting everything on, on the plate, just you need regulations or to facilitate the implementation of COVID protocols. It sure would be nice to figure out a way to let kids choose. Move everybody. It's good for the kids, they don't get something they don't want. The custodians don't have to take out a bunch of trash, and we don't lose that money. So we want to use our resources in a way that we can feed the kids and still, and still support the people in the team. So that's my little attempt to get your support that maybe we should add differently next year. Thank you, the piece said.
Wait, before you go, I have, I have a thank you for you also, Mary. You, one of our goals as a district is partnership, and not just partnership within our, with our families and within our district, but also partnership outside of our district. And last week, Maple Valley Food Bank, as you know, lost their freezers, and I heard that you were the superhero who made magic happen and used your, I know you don't, you're going to be very humble and gracious, I know it.
We have food people, we have frozen freezer goes for, um, you burn, and we have a lot of money tied up. So, um, our own staff here at DeHoma is great, Cody, Bob, Sean, and Kelly, big shout out. Whenever freezer goes down, he's there, he's like, let these guys go over and fix our dinner, because you know what it means. So it doesn't really matter, it's a food bank or somebody else, we help each other.
Well, you truly, you, you saved them thousands of dollars of frozen meat, and so they were so grateful, and I am so grateful for, for you actually showing such a great for you actually showing such a great example of partnership and generosity. So thank you.
Absolutely. And we appreciate that and accepting our donations when we have food. It's a good project.
As you can see, we have a lot to celebrate in this district, truly. So we are going to move on to agenda at five point zero nine, which is our human resource department plan. And I see that we have a team of HR experts in our audience.
They're incredibly patient. I think Ashley started at six AM this morning, so it's been a long day.
Good.
You guys introduce yourself and make sure you're just kidding.
Hi, I'm Ashley. I am an HR tech specialist.
I'm Christine Mulligan. I'm one of the HR coordinators. Mostly I work with certain people.
I'm Sharon Gooch. I'm an HR coordinator working with substitutes, student teachers, and athletic coaches.
Hi, I'm Leta Morris, and I'm HR coordinator. And I mostly work with the classified staff.
And I'm Anna Fabbish, and I'm a HR specialist.
And I'm Tracy Kraus, and I'm the Assistant Director of Human Resources. But mostly I'm just really privileged to work with this awesome group of people that are here. We do start really early in the morning, and I knew we were in for a good fight tonight when I saw Leta go get her hot water. So I knew we were in for the long haul. We have our first slide up there, and I have a clicker. So I think we'll get going. But there's two things really that we want to have you guys meet with. The first one is that even though we're in the infancy of really this work for our team, we've been working on this since December. We have some exciting things that we'd like to share with you. The second thing is that we really want you to know that when you guys talk about a through line that goes between the school board, all the way through every team, and down to every single student, there's a lot of teams like HR who are kind of tucked away in different corners that people don't see very much. And I taught for a long time in the system. Really, the only time I ever connected with HR was when I didn't turn my contract in one time. She was saying to me, a reminder. Well, now we're in the same office, and so I get to see that from her side. And so you're talking about a group of people who haven't necessarily seen themselves on that line. And there are a bunch of teams like this. And so for you guys to start this care's work and to put out all of these teams on a journey that really gets them to think about things from a different perspective, you've really started a fire under a bunch of teams. And our team is taking steps towards that through line. You're not even really aware because the talk amongst ourselves, amongst our team is changed, is different. It's not just about, you know, the pile of work and try and get that done. It's trying to really have conversations about how do we become more effective? How do we support our staff in a different way? Are we meeting these goals and these values that we talk about as a team? And so our discussion has really changed over the last several months. And it started right here with this first slide, which you're going to see much more of these because all these teams now are having these discussions. And this really started around a conversation about our own individual values and how we got those and telling those stories to each other. And they were powerful. And really, what started us on was this opportunity to develop a reason for our existence in human resources that we all truly believe in with all of our heart. It's not just a piece of paper. It's not just something that goes on the wall that we all look at. We really believe in this, and we spent a lot of time on it. There's many, many variations of this to get to this point. And there's going to be more. So we'll be sharing those, I'm sure, in future. But we really believe our core responsibility, we debate this a lot, is to recruit, develop, support, and retain a diverse, motivated workforce for our students and our families. And that's what we're all about. And so every decision that we make is going to come back to that. And that's already started. So we really want you to know that, that the journey that you have sent us on has impacted our discussion greatly. And even though we're just starting this, we're already seeing the influence of. After we took quite a bit of time to get to this point, we started to brainstorm, well, how do we, as a human resources department, connect to these caregivers? And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, but I will tell you that there was a lot of really good discussion around that. And after we got to this point, we started to prioritize that. And we met in this room. We meet once a week for our HR department meeting. We've been doing that long since before I've been here for sixteen months. But we've been using that structure to keep the cadence going around this one. After we came together and prioritized some of the things that we wanted to start working on right away, we made a list, and we started to figure out how can we take care of some of these issues? And really, it was about this time that we started to have a discussion around how do we take some of these ideas and actually make sure that they happen while at the same time, our work is going like this? And there's an anxiety that happens around, if we spend time on this, it takes away from the work we do over here. So we've had some really big discussions around how this work, and this really important work, is going to help support the earth's work that we have every day. It's already starting to have an impact. And we'll get to some success stories here for a second. The thing that I would tell you is that one of our real priorities is to partner. And you guys have used that word a few times tonight. And for us, it means partnering with those teams around us, even in just in this building, to have a better product for our staff across our system. And we really feel like we have reached out and had some close discussions with some of our partners in this building so that we can be better, so we can be more effective. And one of the things that, coming back from the systems work at the San Diego conference was really getting, the word they use was proximity, to gain proximity, get close to the people that are doing the work. And that's what we're doing. We've been reaching out to those people that we interact with that are actually doing the work in buildings and sitting down with them and having conversations about how do we make that communication between all these groups better? So we feel like we're weaving this rope together. We're coming together in a way that maybe we hadn't before because we hadn't looked at it this way. I mentioned that there's this piece about taking it from words into action. And so we, for probably the last six weeks or so, have been identifying some of our focus areas and then creating an action plan around that. I'm not going to go through all those action plans, but Leta, who is fresh off her hot water, is going to share a little more thoroughly one of the action plans. So you kind of see how that's working for us and starting to bring some of this thinking for our team to life. So would you personally agree with that?
Okay. So one of the action items that we decided to focus on was onboarding. And what we want to look at is our current process and then creating new processes that would improve it by providing quality information to our employees and making meaningful for them. So this is the action plan. And you can tell there's steps, planned work, actions, timelines, the person responsible, and evidence of success. So what we did is we started off, we used some small groups to kind of brainstorm what our current practices are, and then also making a list of things that we would like to see in the future. From that point, what we did is we decided to have a meeting this month and invite other people from other departments and buildings to have them share what they do with new employees when they get to their sites. But luckily, we were going to have that in April. And that was very good information that they brought to us of how they onboard people, onboard people as they get to their sites. What we learned is that there was different processes and things that were done, both certified and classified. Everybody was doing it differently. And that was good information for us to hear. So what we want to do from this point on is to continue partnering with those buildings and sites and people to gather the information that we need to create new processes and new documentation so that we make it more meaningful for our new employees. Part of those partnerships would be to have maybe some packets or contact information for the new employees, for their location, so they have that and transition from our HR onboarding all the way to where they begin their job. It's a work in progress. There's a lot of work ahead. We're all excited about doing it. But in doing this work, we're going to be able to have resources and tools and things that are important for our new employees to take to their new sites and welcome to the buildings.
And then we'd like to share, just to go around and share a few celebrations from this work, just so we can leave you with that. Who'd like to go first?
I don't know. I'm not the oldest or the most senior in the department, but I've seen a lot of just work evolving around what Leta mentioned in her action plan about onboarding. We're talking about communication on our website. We are coming up with great ideas. I think it's significant that Tracy's kind of helping us facilitate based on to whom cares partnering. I just wanted to quickly go back to the box, the rope that Tracy had up on the image. And when we were looking around that image, I was, in my mind, celebrating not only our impact that human resources will have with community, the buildings, other staff members, but ourselves. So that struck me as kind of a celebration that this brings us together. It makes us think a little harder. We're excited about it. I was also looking around, going, we have a hundred plus years of home service just in our department alone. So for me, that's also a celebration because we've raised some history. And we have a lot of years ahead to provide, you know, great service. So that's my celebration.
So thanks to Tracy. He really encouraged us all to step outside of our comfort zone and get out of our offices. There's a very small team of us. Again, we're the smallest department here in central services, well, besides communications. But there's only eight of us. And we are a very small team, and we help vast amount of people. We don't even, we don't just help the staff members, but we help students and parents and so many community members. So he encouraged us to have a little presence out there. There are many of us who have worked here for many years, and there are so many staff members who don't even know who we are. They just associate an email, a name, or a voice, a phone call. So in August, we were having a problem with staffing. We needed more staff members due to COVID. And so the full team of us went to the farmer's market on three Saturdays, and we were there for eight hours. And we met a lot of retired teachers who worked out on our sub list. We also spent a very rainy day across the street. And we did a job fair over there during the day to reach out to our community members who don't work during the day. And we actually onboarded one of the nurses, the man that we met over there. So just having a presence in, you know, the community, the buildings, it's changed a lot this year. So that's a huge celebration for us, which job fairs. Hello.
Like Ashley said, we've really, like everyone right now, we're struggling with hiring. So we've really tried to embrace and get creative. I think it was Sharon that came up with partnering with their city to use their farmer's market last fall and summer. Your reply, I think we got some bus drivers too, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got some bus drivers. So we're trying to do those kinds of things as well. We went to Central Washington this year to recruit new teachers. We also had two job fairs, I guess you could say, at the high school. We had over a hundred new teachers come to the job fair at the high school this year, which was awesome. I know that we've already hired a couple of them, so, or were going to be. And then we also had some of our HR team went to the high school to future-ready job fair. So we're also kind of full circling at the beginning. So they might not be eligible to work yet, of course, but maybe this summer they can apply for our summer student helper jobs, or maybe they want to look at some custodial jobs later down the road. All kinds of really neat things are happening. Also had a virtual job fair again this year, which is kind of a way for us to maybe reach some communities and some teachers or certificate staff that might not be, even know who Maple Valley is, and just trying to outreach and working with communications and trying to, you know, put things on Instagram in different areas that we can get maybe some folks from other areas that we might not get some diversity in our schools. So, yeah.
My celebration had to do with our very first slide, which is the HR four responsibilities and values page. The first moment of work now is that words really matter. And we talked about this slide so often and for so long. And we not only very carefully and intentionally picked words that were meaningful, accurate, and impactful, but we also just reduced the number of words that were out there to make them easier for us to connect with. And the second thing that I think that we have gained in identity as an HR department through this page, we created a lens that we can use to focus our work and to inform our decisions in our department. It provides common language and understanding that we can reach together. I've now seen us pointed to this document and saying, how does this decision, or this process, or this opportunity look through this lens? And it gives us that place to go that we can all focus in. But I think it has brought us together and given us some identity as a department.
So that's just a short version of a lot of work that we put into HR. We have six of us here tonight. And just a shout out to Mark and to Janice, who are online watching. But I think that the presence here from our department kind of shows that this is meaningful work for us. And that's just a little bit of clues into that work. And so if you have questions for us, we'd be interested.
You gave me so many moments where I wanted to jump on the couch. You know that scene when Tom Cruise is coming out? He was so excited. I could kind of do that. But this, that is would quite be in effect.
That was very nice.
I should do it anyway. Yeah, okay. Well, live life. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, just a comment. Thank you. I, we have these conversations a lot in my work right now. And I think sometimes we forget that every business or everything is always about people. We kind of get very, you know, we talk about policies. We've been talking about processes, procedures, and things like that. But in the day, it's always about people. And as we think about where those people come from, they all walk through the door for more before they get to us, before they get to our kids. So I think, when I think about it that way, it kind of puts a, to me, it kind of puts a really fine point on it. So thank you. And I want to applaud it. I meant to come out to the HR Tuesday morning meeting. I wasn't going to get out there. Please don't take it. This is very much of me in call back. Please don't take it as I don't recognize the importance of what you do. I will get out there and I do the pursuit. And I think it's, especially the last two years, it's easy to like focus on COVID and say, hey, you know, this is new and this is different, and we're going to struggle. But it's not an easy job, even under non-COVID circumstances. So that concept is a long-some thing. So just a kind of heartfelt thank you.
I just really appreciate the process and the fact that you reflected on your journey thus far and where you're at. And then shared that with us and the celebrations too. It's pretty powerful, the way that you took this on and your commitment and dedication to it, how seriously you took it. And already seeing results like that is really powerful. And that's exciting. So I just can't wait to see you in person.
I just wanted to mention my learning that I have because I had a moment to actually see the goals.
see the goals translated into a department. I haven't, I haven't seen that yet, so that's probably just me being green. Um, but I love that for so many reasons. The biggest reason, just with like what you guys said, that sometimes people don't even, you know, they've worked in this district for how many years and they don't even know who are your names. And for, and then you mentioned, you know, coming out of your offices and doing this work kind of across the board. And I just think that's brilliant. I mean, we're stronger than others. So I love hearing about that and it's, um, it was learning for me also just being very grateful for all of you and all the work you did. So thanks.
I should have said, you, um, this work that is happening right now with these teams that are kind of out of the spotlight, they're not on the director, superintendent, admin, teacher line, but they're working their way that way and they're fired up. I mean, they've, you've got a lot more teams coming to share and they're fired up about it. And I think it, I think it could be, I think for 29 years, I think it could be the most impactful thing as a system that we've done during that time. So we appreciate you all too, you come share tonight. Thanks for having us.
Thank you all and please go on. No more hot water. The hot water is turned off.
Okay, we are going to move on to agenda item 510, which is the summary review of 2021, 22 board targets. And we have Director of Special Services Nat Willsie and Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Don Wigley joining us.
So this one's a little anti-climactic because you thought the main, um, the main piece just happened before you. You got a little bit of an additional glance into the department work that is really, um, one half of our strategic plan to make our goal, our goals and targets come alive. And the other part to that is going to happen next week with our set plans. So, um, would you, I don't know if you are clicking on, I don't know if Tamara did give you the slide link, but that's okay. You guys have it in front of you. And truly the biggest piece connected to the, um, work goals and targets is that we are recommending that we don't deviate from where we set our focus, um, last year. If you recall, we really identified those key areas. And we don't want to deviate away from those. And just that main idea of recovery for our students and, and of course our staff members supporting them in all components of the academic, the social, emotional, the belonging sense in relation to those goals and targets. And certainly we're just at the beginning stages of that work. And as you've seen with the different departments and the site plans and the moving forward, we, we never thought it would be a single year of an effort that way and it's that cluster. Nice job AJ. Very quick movement there. Would you, uh, advance? Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Stop. There you go. Perfect. As we think about the focus that especially our buildings have had, um, you're going to hear from them on Tuesday, connected to what's been working, what, um, what do they think they need to tweak a little bit? What do they see their next steps being? We don't see moving away from these primary focus areas from the building perspective. As we really think about all of the goals and targets, you see a much more broad array of pieces being targeted by the different departments. I'm sure that that's kind of obvious as you look through those. Um, what you will see every time you click in, if you were to click in and look at this as we progress throughout the year is we'll add the HR piece that Tracy just presented to you tonight so that at any point as we continue to build this and expand on it, you'll see the pieces connected to all the departments. AJ, if you could, the very last slide. Well, I'm, there you go. One before that. That just gives you a little, um, bit of an overview connected to the departments that you haven't yet gotten a real glimpse from. So we have an action packed lineup for you between now and June 13th. I bet you can hardly stand it.
There's going to be a lot of diastancing.
Yep. I have never seen diastancing, but I'm pretty darn excited.
We're going to reinforce this statement.
By, by eight forty-nine, I'm just, it starts to get fun here. So any questions? Would it matter if I could answer one?
I have a question, a clarified question. When you mentioned that the focus goals are not going to change next year, am I correct in thinking that there's going to be a readjustment on the emphasis that each of those focus areas has? I know that, for example, belonging was, was far and wide, um, in terms of all of our buildings, really focusing on that at great length this year? Is there going to be a readjustment so that the other focus areas are also shunned and more depth? And that, I lost my, my brain, but do you understand what I'm saying?
I do think that you will see a little bit more balance in some of those as we try to look and say, where are we actually at for our kids and what are the next steps forward? And some of those questions will be the ones that I know that you guys will ask, be asking our building principals. So what are we actually seeing as a part of our students and what their needs are? And how do we then adjust the action that the teams are taking to be really as focused about? Mike, is there anything additional that you want to add?
Yeah, I consider part of it, I think it's a great question for President Hallwell, but, um, remembering that those five target areas, um, we were coming out of COVID at that point and having the conversation about kidneys going back into the school. And like Executive Director Wigley just shared, you know, we're in a different spot now. And so recalibrating is absolutely something that's happening.
Okay, we do not have any other questions or comments. So thank you. Thank you both. We will move on to agenda item 511, which is our first reading revised policy 6220, bid or request proposal requirements. And Director of Finance and Operations Laurie Cloud is going to join us.
Thank you, Mr. Hallwell. This actual policy is just an update recommended by laws that are based on some federal law changes. Um, it really just more clearly defines breaking up the bidding, federal bidding versus any state and locals. So it's federal and then anything other. So that is the main difference. The other thing that's allowing here, which we have available to us, we don't currently utilize, um, is the availability. It's like basically we have good odds, which we do. We have the availability to procure some of our federal dollars, our bidding that we do for federal, using federal dollars a little bit easier. We currently don't use federal dollars in that capacity, but if that was to change, we have a capacity to do that with this policy.
Questions or comments?
You just answered mine. Yeah. Thank you.
Leave the twins a motion. Just pop that up. Okay, thank you, Laurie. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Lauren.
Agenda item 6.01, action to approve our consent agenda. May I please have a motion to approve agenda item 6.01, action to approve our consent agenda?
I'm moved to approve our consent agenda.
Second, say.
Vice President Miller motioned and Director Wigan seconded. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item 6.01, action to approve our consent agenda passes five to zero. Next, we have agenda item 6.02, action to approve the minutes of the April 19th, 2022 work study session. May I please have a motion to approve agenda item 6.02, action to approve the minutes of the April 19th, 2022 work study session?
I'm moved to approve the April 19th work study session minutes.
Second, say.
Vice President Miller motioned and Director Wigan seconded. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item 6.02, action to approve the minutes of the April 19th, 2022 work study session passes five to zero. Agenda item 6.03, action to approve the minutes of the April 26th, 2022 board meeting is next on our agenda. May I please have a motion to approve agenda item 6.03, action to approve the minutes of the April 26th, 2022 board meeting?
I'm moved to approve the April 26th board meeting minutes.
Second, say.
Vice President Miller motioned and Director Wigan seconded. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item 6.03, action to approve the minutes of the April 26th, 2022 board meeting passes five to zero.
President Hallwell is correct, I, I don't believe I would say ten minutes.
Oh, so you're arguing with me?
On April 26th, I would be abstaining from that.
Thank you for clarifying. So it's going to pass four to zero. And actually, could we have somebody else second since he can't move? I second? Okay, thank you. I'm going to change that to, um, so Tamara, Vice President Miller motioned and then Director Penner seconded. Thank you, Director Penner. And then agenda item 7.01, board inquiry tracking system, which is also called bits. And Superintendent Hanson, can you give an update since we made a lot of updates during our retreat?
You both appreciate the discussion we had at the retreat and, uh, based on that, those conversations, um, have taken action on bits items. I wouldn't say taken action, uh, have resolved some bits items, um, and are currently exploring one of the bits items around filming. Um, and so you'll notice the list is quite a bit shorter. Um, I've also engaged, modified one in the direction of the board and started having a conversation with Executive Director Wigley about one of those particular things. So we'll continue to work on these notes on work studies.
Thank you, Superintendent Hanson. And we are now at agenda item 8.01, which is our adjournment. So I'm going to adjourn our meeting at 8:55 PM. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. And it's been wonderful.